Well, it does not go until nine. Yeah.
I'm just getting over and everybody's have something.
This is awful. This is the first I've felt decent since last Thursday.
We're going to be 60 seconds behind the pledge.
Call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Let the record show that today is February the 7th. Mr. Butler, would you care to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I would love to, sir.
Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Secretary, will you call the roll please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Kelly Camper, present.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not have that.
Nor do I. Audience introductions.
Dr. Beers, from Central.
Tracy Ballard for the Tribune.
Bob Jolly Airport.
Alan Butler Airport today. Man, thank you guys for being here. Mr. Bill brought in some donuts. You're welcome to...
Eat them.
Have at them.
Or look at them.
Did you make them?
No, I wish I did. I could say I made the trip to get them.
Yeah. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve, so we're good there. Commissioner items, Mr. Canada?
I don't think anything.
Mr. Prince?
I have two things. Yesterday, you and I attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting. It was outstanding. What we learned is that we could build a three-bedroom, one-bath, one-car garage home in approximately $124,000. The problem rose, what adds to the cost of that would be the cost of a lot and then the infrastructure, water sewer, if this curb and gutter and all those things that go on with it. The school is looking, and they have seven lots on Main Street that already has the infrastructure in place. They're looking at potentially donating that to the affordable housing.
Meaning there's water taps?
There's water taps, sewer taps. It already meets the code, so we don't have to put in roads and gutters and all that stuff that runs the cost up real high.
Electric too?
Yeah, has all the infrastructure. So, I thought it was very encouraging, and there was no commitment at all from the school. It was just Monty Lee said that they felt that that was something that they would certainly consider. That's a huge hurdle for this. Of course, the reason for affordable housing, this is not second-hand housing, poor people housing, this is housing for people starting a career who want to come to work in Custer County. That includes our sheriffs who can't afford to buy a $350,000 house, our teachers who we'd like to recruit here can't find affordable homes. So, this is, I like to call them starter homes, but it doesn't have to be for a young couple, but just kind of starter homes. And I thought it was absolutely, and I thought I walked out very encouraged that we're finally going to be on a path towards helping the industry, and any business can come in, anybody could use those homes, a lot of hired people, so there's a place for workers to come stay. So, that was the one thing.
So, how do you get the money? Is there a grant?
Money is not going to be difficult to get, believe it or not. The Upper Rockers area council government's housing, I'm sorry, their housing unit has money for this type of project. They encourage it. There's also federal funds, there are state funds other than Upper Rockers. And I think the funds will be the least of our hurdles. I think the biggest hurdle is going to be, we had one gentleman here, of course, we'd have to go out to bed, but we had one gentleman here as a builder of affordable housing. In fact, he's one who brought a sample blueprint of what he could build for $125,000. He's a philanthropist, he's not interested in making a bunch of money doing this. Of course, we'll go out to bed, whether he gets it or not, you know, it would be certainly how it turns out.
What was it, the house?
Who would own that? And that is a question still, that it's possible that the Upper Rockers area council government would own it. It's possible that the committee could own it. There would be deed restrictions on it. What we're concerned about is someone moving into a house and getting a really great deal, wait a couple of months, and then sell your market value. So, there would be some kind of, we talked about, you know, we don't have details, of course. But we were concerned about that, so we'd have deed restrictions.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, it's a great plan, you know, across the county, but we could get some more people who could afford to live here and take advantage of the things that we have.
I wish I could have been.
Can I interject about the ownership of this?
Anything?
The other, not the other side, but one of the sides of this whole affordable housing thing is that the ownership of that house would be almost like a holding company, short-term. We really want to get affordable housing so that people can buy them. We don't want to get into the rental market. We're after homes that people can afford to buy when they move to this county, either at a job entry level or...
Yeah, we don't want to be main danger.
No. So, obviously, there'd have to be some ownership initially until the house is bought and subsequently sold, but that would be the idea, is to get the thing sold.
And it's really very preliminary. The key was, once the school suggested that they may, I don't know what, may be willing to donate the property, a huge hurdle was overcome, because the real cost, this is not the building and the house, it's that infrastructure, streetlights, sewer lines, curb and gutter, roads, all those things that run the cost way up. So, it was a very encouraging meeting, and we'll just see where I'll report back. I'm sure Tom will join me at the next meeting, and we'll report back to let you know what progress, if any, has been made. The second thing is, and I really don't, I'm very concerned about something, and I'd just like to voice this. Action 22 has had their issues over the years, but recently, they got their act together. They have management issues. This is such an important lobbying group that I feel we need a Custer County Board of County Commissioners Commissioner representing the county. I know we have delegated that over the last couple of meetings.
That's what I've been doing. What? I've been at the meetings.
Oh, have you?
Yeah. We had a great one, I reported on it here, and then I had Ann sit in on one of them because I couldn't make it.
Okay.
And then they came up, and she was actually here, and we had a meeting.
Okay. The impression I had, I retract what I'm going to say, the impression I had...
As I agree with you, it is very important.
Yeah. The impression I had was that it was going in your place, and I didn't feel it was appropriate.
No, no.
If that's not the case, I'm done. That's all I have.
Sure, that's fine. I, the last Action 22 meeting was in Custer County.
Yeah. She was making the rounds to everybody.
She being, can't say her name, but she's the chairman, she's the lead.
And it was very good. She went to all 22 counties to say, here, I'm invigorating this, whatever things, you know, we had an out, we had our reps there, the guys that are on the committee, Charlie Walton and a couple others, and I went through it. Very good.
Yeah, I actually, I must have misunderstood or was not listening carefully enough.
Don't listen to me?
I thought that Ann went to the first and the second meeting in your...
No, well, she was there too.
But she wasn't representing you. Yeah, okay. Okay, good, good.
And it probably hurt me at first meeting.
Anything else, sir?
No, I said, thank you.
I don't believe I have anything for Commissioner items. I, Smith, anything?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Administrative assistant?
Nothing today.
Thank you.
You invite a new guest.
Mr. John, yeah, he came in just after we did introductions. John Johnson, there were donuts back there, feel free to help yourself.
I saw Bill at the bakery, that's why I came.
Oh, you remembered, there was a meeting.
All right, very good. Yes, ma'am.
You skipped over amendments to the agenda. Do you have any?
No, we didn't. We said yes.
Oh.
That's that new medicine you're on.
I'm telling you.
But thank you, because one of the meetings I did skip over.
I apologize.
No, absolutely no problem.
It's a...
Then we'll move into staff reports. Our first report, it would be from the Airport Advisory Committee. Gentlemen, one of both yours, Senator...
Warrior, you're in conference.
Yeah, I was thinking, I don't know, you know, we are live streaming this meeting, so we probably asked you to come forward.
It's not, just FYI, it's not working real well because CCOM is down.
Oh.
And CenturyLink is slow.
You're on Custer, Cam.
Probably come forward, and we'll make arrangements for a chair. Mr. Kelly, can you?
You're really being a jiboff.
Can you, I want those black chairs, please.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good morning, sir. Handshake here.
You forgot from the protocol already.
Kind of, kind of did forget.
Good morning, everyone. For the chair.
Glad you're here.
Good morning, Senator.
How are you?
Good. I was just going for it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Well, good morning, Tonya's boy. Well, how are you, airport folks?
I love that you said so.
First of all, we'd like to, I would like to thank the board commissioners for the appointment of the rest of the board, speaking for the rest of the board. We enjoy working at the airport and taking care of things out there. Appreciate you making me chairman. I've done a little bit of that. And you know what I found since I come back? Everything's different. Now, we use more, more technology.
Yeah.
Than I had before. Not that I was around when we used just typewriters, but we have other things. So, we thank you from the rest of the board members.
You're welcome.
Number one item, I'll get to on his report, but to let you know that Bob Jolly, me, Bob Custer, went to the Colorado Airport Operators Association, lovingly called the CAOA. They meet twice a year. We found that the winter meeting is probably more productive because the Colorado Airport, Colorado Aeronautical Board meets with them at that time, so we get to see the CAB, we call it, everything's out, you know, and the CAOA together. Those boards have really changed personnel. It's been six years, and they've rotated out. The Colorado Aeronautical Board ran into some money issues about four years ago, and so we've had money cut off to airports improvements about three years, but this year now, they have the budget back. It amounted to about $11 million, I think, that was on our budget. It was just accounting errors, and no one was taking money or anything, it just, they screwed up. They messed up big time. I don't know if you've ever been to a JBC meeting, but it can be pretty wild, you know, there's about 25 people sitting around, and everybody's looking, protecting their own territory. So, what we found out at this meeting is not only had the people changed, but things were pretty much the same as they had been when we asked for improvements. On our list of improvements we needed, one of the things that we had down to start with is a fog coat of runway where they put a coating that seals the top of the asphalt, and then they come back, well, the chip seal, chip seal, crack seal, and they put the fog coat on and paint. So, Bob and I are bopping along through the, down through the hallway, and Todd Green, the state planner for the Colorado Aeronautical Board, the state guys, we flagged him down, and he said, well, it's so good to see you and all that stuff. And we said, great, how you doing? He said, fine, I didn't want to talk to you guys. Okay, what about? I know, you don't get any money. He said, we have some new people that index runways, and I'd like to bring them to Custer County and use your airport as training device. We'll have them do the work. He said, we'll check it, bring it back here, and engineers check it, and then they have to do the paperwork. He said, for, and they said, well, crack seal, fog coat, and paint. So, we said, well, that's a really good idea.
I mean, they'll do more than just engineer it, they'll do it too.
We're going to be the first, and they'll, you know, in other words, you got a project, let's use your training.
And they're coming out in May.
And they'll be here in May. Caitlin and Todd Green, you've heard us talk about Caitlin. Caitlin is a rather official title, that's really, nothing goes through that office without Caitlin. So, it's important, she checks. So, that's going to happen in May, and that's a really good thing for us. It's in the system, it's...
No cost and no strains.
There'll be a cost, and I don't know if there'll be a...
Material.
...mats or material or whatever, whatever it is, I don't know.
We budgeted, if I remember correctly, for that this year, to recode it.
10 grand, whatever. And we get down to it, hopefully, we maybe won't take that 10 grand. You know, we kind of estimated fat on that, and that's in the system. So, we feel pretty good about that. The rest of the state is in pretty good shape for airports. While CAB has not had much money, the local people have done like we have, just kind of take care of their own thing, make sure things are safe, and try to keep the public flying. Are you there on 3B, sir? I might have made mistakes. It's not supposed to be training, correct, instead of rating performance? Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought maybe something...
At first.
Oh.
I'm dumb.
It's supposed to be training for fog seal.
Thinking of weather and such.
And I thought it was raining, and then another airport board member said, do we have a meeting tomorrow? And I said, no, it's actually next week, but this is the meeting.
And then, can you talk a little about fog seal?
What fog seal does? What it is, what it does? Fog seal is applied hot, and I don't know temperatures and all that engineering stuff, but they have a truck, and you've seen these trucks? There'll be a big tanker somewhere, and then it'll be a little application truck and...
Spray bar.
Yeah, yeah, with a spray bar. And the stuff's not thick and gooey, it's kind of a paint. It's more consists of paint, and then they spray that over the runway, and it rejuvenates the surface of the blacktop.
So, is FOG, is that an acronym for something?
It's one, no, they just call it fog seal, rather than a liquid coat or a chip seal. They spray that on there, and it dries, I think, pretty much immediately. We were landing on it four or five hours after.
And the airport, the airport won't be closed for any length of time.
We had to close it while they were on the...
Right now. Is that just Monday?
And we...
Yes. That's reasonable.
Noted, to put our big orange X's out.
Yes.
On it, and pilots are supposed to check those, notice the airman, that's why I noted this, to see if... I got away way across Nebraska at the airport we were going to land at. It was getting dark, and we were about to fill, and I hadn't checked it open, and they had the airport all tore up, so I had to go with my eye, which was... You can get yourself in big heat problems if you don't pay attention, get in somewhere in the dark, and they got caterpillars, road griders, slipping around on the runway. Talk with Dave Thompson, you guys, I think, have talked to him about since I'm on the end. And I don't know if you've seen the truck that they're proposing to put in the hangar out there, but it's one slick looking truck.
Good looking truck.
Has very few hours on it. It has the ladder system, it has a nozzle. We have two-story houses here, and this will be able to service a lot of things out.
That's great.
Where is the truck located now?
It's at our house.
Is it?
Yeah, they had it out the other day, cleaning it, waxing it all up. So, I think they've got all their stuff ready.
So, you have to wax it for them?
Well, I asked him that, and he said, oh, it's already waxed. Probably, it will go probably in the middle bay. That other bay has that one brace that comes down, and I agree with Dave, I kind of think it'd be real close, you know, backing in and out in the dark. He says he's got six young folks that are going through fire, under 60, going through fire training, they live out there, they're excited about being able to operate that particular truck. So, that's about ready to go in, and I don't know where we stand on paperwork, and now we're at that meeting.
There was a minor amendment yesterday to the international agency agreement, which we approved yesterday, so I don't know if the other organization, but I think we did our share.
So, was that truck purchased, actually, or is it just living here temporarily?
I don't know that. I have not had an update since I...
Last we heard, there was some question, and there was a guy that said he might do it.
You know, Alan, did you have a conversation with Dave about that, or not?
Cause I haven't.
Yeah, let's take the short answer.
That's a fine answer.
Yeah, well, that time we officially talked, there was still two or three options on the table about acquiring the truck. So, as far as I know, as a commission, we have not been informed about what happened.
They were looking at individual, the financing.
Yeah, they have, they have several different options. So, that is about ready to go live out there. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think there's probably some small items we've overlooked, and they have two, but one thing, when we were talking to, the last conversation we had about the truck and where it was going was Dallas said, I'll show you how to get in the front door. Well, I sometimes have trouble getting in the front door, especially if I'm colder in a hurry, so it's probably going to be better if they have the backup, you know, the back door. That's just me having to talk to my people.
Cause the front door is a keypad?
It's a keypad. Sometimes, it usually works, but if it didn't, they need a, wouldn't that be something? You know, they get out there and they can't...
The hangar door or the front roll-up doors have a keypad on it too.
Another question that has been asked me, what does OMS stand for? Because we call it OMS too. Stands for operations, maintenance, and storage. OMS, operations, maintenance, storage. And they call them that because of, a lot of times, the way they were built, the way they were paid for, you know, that was paid for, biggest part by the state, by state grant, and there was, I think, six years that we could rent it or anything, we could put equipment in. Now, that time is gone, we can do with what we want. Now, let's see what else do we have here? That's why I put that in the OMS.
Yep.
You know, when you're young, as we are, sometimes you forget things, and I don't recall anything else that I have to say. So, our airport manager, Robert, will figure in fuel and such, and while we're at the airport operators meeting, I ran to Kendra Cross. She is the district supervisor for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. She is an animal and plant health inspector, and she came out three years ago, three years ago, and did some animal control for us, and they charged the county for it. It wasn't a whole bunch of money, but I asked her, what are they charging now? And she said that they have a contract with CDOT, and they don't charge anything to come out in.
What? That's a price.
Yeah, we can afford that.
That's why she said, give me the price, don't hike me down. Anyway, I'm going to give her a call around May, some flights, and see if I can get her out in June to do a little training for us on animal control.
Good, excellent.
Also, in January, we sold 337 gallons of fuel as of 8:13 this morning, 8:18, I'm sorry. We had 1,813 gallons of fuel in the tank.
Can I ask a question right in front of you, please? A meeting, a couple of meetings ago, we authorized you to adjust the prices to be competitive. Have you actually done that?
Yes.
Have you seen any difference in sales by doing that?
Well, actually, it's very unusual for us to sell that much fuel in January, because January's totally flooded, and so far this month, we've sold 141 gallons.
Wow, that's a lot.
So...
It's a little better than it was last year.
Weather's been better. The weather's been better, and our prices...
Prices are more competitive now, that's why.
Great. The only place that we go to really save money is down to Walsonburg, and the cost of flying from Walsonburg to here.
Jersey, or did I?
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. So, anyway, we did find out early in the week that an anomaly occurs with our fuel system, and it's, since I've been on the board, and I've been on the board since 2011, I've never seen this anomaly before. So, I went out and checked it, and sure enough, we do have an anomaly, and it has to do with the fuel handle and the process of getting that going.
I've got asked this question, does it have anything to do with Eaton sales?
Yes.
Have they been attentive to, first of all, is it, is it an issue that, is their issue or is it our issue?
Their issue.
Have we contacted them, and have they been attentive?
No.
Okay. But we plan on doing that?
Yeah, we've done that, just found out about it. Just Thursday.
Right.
Thursday, right.
Please report back to us if there's any issues with Eaton sales. We've been over backwards, agreed with them on their pricing, you know, we said, okay, we're going to pay you, but if it's their problem, I'll speak for myself, but I suspect my comrades here will agree, we're going to go after them. So, just let us know if there's any issue. I mean, if they're attentive, they fix it, no problem. Just let us know.
Anyway, that's that.
Okay. Can we still sell fuel?
Yes, we can.
We're still open for business. Okay, good.
24/7.
Great. That's good.
I have a question, if I may, please. I hate to break this up, but it seems like it's been going on forever.
Smith, Hager, fixed?
No.
We authorized it, and we authorized the money.
The material was there. There was an issue. I haven't talked to Johnny lately. I'm not sure what the issue is, but him and, what's his best name?
Yeah, the gentleman who worked for you at work? Yeah, I don't remember him doing work either.
Yeah, I've talked to his significant other, and apparently, him and Johnny... Yeah, I've talked to his significant other and apparently him and Johnny have got something in work because Johnny was gonna be out of town for a little while and apparently he's still out of town, so.
So it's a process, I'm fine, I'm just concerned if something has gone off.
The material's been delivered, the work has been agreed to Johnny and the guy that's gonna do the work had met. They're taking care of it.
Super. Thank you. We'll let you know when it's done. I'd really like to remove that from my file back there that just keeps fucking me over and over. I mean, but I'm glad it's a process, looks like it is. And he's on board. He's in it. I mean, he mentioned it to me a couple times, he was never ugly. You know, he just said, you know, "I'd really like to..." I disagree with you, but kind of fostered him, so good. I appreciate that a lot.
And there was some discussion about cleaning up around a couple of hangers. Has any progress been made in that area? Do you know?
Bill Geifold. Yes, we're working on it and I talked to Bill Geifold once. He's been, he works in South Korea and he doesn't get back here very often, but we have discussed it with him and everybody agrees that some of that stuff needs to get cleaned up.
I have a question I'd like to ask you as well. I know you have a video camera on the south side of that south hangar that can monitor the ramp. I wonder, thinking about your fuel cell sales, obviously I think we can track use. Obviously, we've had some real estate transactions in the county and in Werfville County and I wonder if we can tie increased fuel sales to use from the Navajos, use from the new buyers of...
The Navajos?
The Navajo Nation. I guess it would be Navajo, not Navaho.
Navajo Nation. They just bought four new canars and they are flying them in. I don't know how much jet fuel...
They burn in jet, they burn them.
They are burning jet fuel, which we do not have. And that's something that I've been meaning to talk to our board about down the road. I think depending on how much traffic they do bring in here, I think that's something that we should...
We're watching the CNA Truman. Yeah, that's, I guess what we're getting at is tracking that use to see, not necessarily what we're thinking about jet fuel, but where the increase in fuel sales.
They may even be willing to pay for us to put in jet fuel dispenser for them as we expand our runway for another person. I mean, if they're willing to pay for it, I think...
Yeah, they have enough traffic that just wants it.
Exactly. For their benefit. Unless you tell us that it's something we need for just general aviation, not just for a specific customer.
Yeah, and I'm tracking, trying to track all our traffic and find out how much jet. And I get calls quite often wanting to know if we do have jet. And I tell them no, but...
Tracking it's sometimes voluntary because the pump's set up so you put an number in there and you can chase it back to a registration, but it's up to the pilot to put it in.
Correct.
Let's get the fuel.
A lot of times they put zeros or fall ones or something.
Just to get through it.
There is a citation pipe that comes and goes. I'm not sure where they come out of, Iowa. But we see it here quite often and then there's a, there's another jet. So as that kind of traffic comes around, yeah, and they buy lots of fuel, you know, where I go fly my Vans and I'll put, you know, twenty bucks for a couple hours of traveling. They'll put in four hundred gallons. Maybe burn seventy-five gallons a side or more.
And Bill Geifold's got a jet.
He does.
Yeah, it's worth chasing.
And talking about. And then I heard or I saw or I read where somebody, I suppose it was Jackie Hall, planning office, had looked to see how many homes are within the five mile radius and there was three hundred, three hundred fifty-two or something, that homes now within that radius. A lot of those people are, are, or something were interested in aviation, that's why they bought us here.
What is five miles significant?
It's an airport protection overlap and the state helped us do that, like...
Good.
But it was to protect the airport from obstacles when they were starting to put up wind generators and saddle towers. You know, there was a big boom in then, you know, and we've got a, we've got a new tower in the county, I don't know if you know, it's over here by the gravel pit. And it's about twenty-five short of having a light on it. So we tell people that it's not overcharged. So we tell people, "Be aware, if you're going over there and you're that low, it shouldn't be that low over there, but they could be." I've been over there that low, looking for the dam.
Wanted to be, if you know the word.
And it doesn't have a light on it, so at night, you're... But back to the traffic and stuff, you know, every time, some of you have heard me say this, if you got, like Bill wants to build four hangers, well, the taxes on those four hangers, which are the same size as a hangar I have at Lindemere and Dock out of, flies the bear across the way from me, is about four hundred dollars tax, that's four hundred and eighty-seven dollars in tax. And then the lease payment's about four hundred. So that's about eight hundred dollars that's coming, money to the county. The airport doesn't get it all, of course, you know, it's the only district there, but it goes to that general account, goes to that account. So you get four of those, well, there's, what is that, thirty-two, three hundred dollars if you want it all? And then you get, let's say there are twenty hangers out there and all of them are eight hundred dollars. And that's reasonable for hanging tax. And, you know, you go to Denver, some other larger municipalities around the country, it's almost unaffordable to have them, unless it belongs to your corporation and your right officer. Good. All right, gentlemen. What else do we have? Any more questions? Anything that may make perfect... I confused all of my board, now then I'll go back.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in. How was that for a short?
Later, Bob.
Oh, yes.
Your quick note that you need afterwards. Something to talk about. Jog your mind, you know you need to jog.
Why don't you call me, Commissioner?
Hey, do you wanna come and do your thing now?
Bob? I guess there's joint stars on the back of your jacket. Have anything to do with marijuana? Just checking.
Thank you, guys.
You guys, thanks.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you today?
Thank you for coming in. Okay, I have these numbers that we haven't seen.
So is there a surprise? Did you're waiting to tell us?
No.
That's good news. And it's what you expect.
Yeah.
When we start collecting on the school bond issue, is that true, honestly?
When?
Yeah.
Year? Since I remember you.
No, I mean the new.
Oh, the new one, we are, we are.
That's what I was gonna ask, did it start in the first month?
Captain Improvements is for, look at twelve thousand two eighty in December. That was what? What was it for? Yeah, that's what I was asking, we got some of the man's stuff, you know. That's more on this area. I only asked because Rusty came in and said that they got their load back today. He failed to tell us that yesterday.
That was some bread and lard. I have a...
We accept the Treasury's report, report for January first through January thirty-first.
This is the second page of the...
I apologize.
Second and June, correct it.
I regret that. We accept the Treasury report for December first, December thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Been moved to accept the Treasury report, December one through January thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, discussion. Hearing some going all favor, say aye. Pose name, motion carried. Or has been accepted, I will sign that.
So January, when you're ready to go to you?
Did Gary buy a truck at the end of here?
I'll move that we accept the Treasury's report for January, month of January, two thousand eighteen.
Been moved in second to accept Treasury's report, January one through January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, discussion.
Just a quick question, this, Virginia and I, I'm pretty sure, what's the auto tax various expenses?
That's the...
That's the...
That's the, yeah.
Normal.
Further questions, comments? Proceed, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carried. Or has been accepted.
You were recent.
I... That was gonna get hard.
Oh, no, no. This is just a report I'm supposed to show you and then I hung in Kelly's office. It's in my PT for the last quarter in seventeen. Since we didn't meet, you didn't get to see it. Show it to you now and then I'll do it. I have a trustee. Yeah, I'll sign it.
George, I'm reading that show. So that goes with your records, Kelly?
You don't need to prove a lot to me, that's just for coaches.
Statute says you're supposed to look at it.
Thank you.
All right, man. Anything else?
Appreciate it. Come in.
Thank you very much.
Is it Dylan in back there?
Oh.
I want everybody.
You want me to see if Kim's room isn't available?
It's available, sure.
Thank you, thank you, Nick. She's on the phone. You get one?
Yeah. Yeah, but if she's not available, then just wait. Okay, sounds good, thanks. She's in a meeting till eleven.
Who's that?
Laura.
Okay.
Uh, want me to...
Is Tim available?
See if Tim is available.
Let me see, uh, report from public health.
Straight to voicemail. Is there a report from public health today?
Let me call...
We're gonna be right back.
No, public health. It wasn't. She's not supposed to be here till ten.
And she knows.
We'll call over there and see.
She's dead.
I had texted her, but I didn't hear that.
It's a whole hour. How did we do that? Hit the skin. Something wrong with us.
Run, just run gone too fast. Hi, is Alyssa on her way over? Yes, please. If it's possible. Okay, thanks. Bye-bye. Pastor Guy, Commissioner's office, this is Bridgette. Yeah. We're in a meeting right now.
On that airport repair job?
Okay.
Last I remember, he was held up and doing the work cause he wasn't injured. Him being...
Kevin.
Oh, for the hangar you're talking about? Yeah, I don't really, I guess that would be the... I would think that would be the owner of the hangers. Of, y'all said paying him? Or no, he was doing it for free.
He was volunteering.
He was volunteering. I was thinking it was your liability that was your concern. I can't speak to that. No, that wasn't the agreement, it was just a volunteer that he said he'd do the work. So it's not, the county doesn't have any liability for that.
I don't know, this live streaming is not working at all, so I think, yeah. CCOM has scheduled maintenance from six AM to two PM or something like that. It's like, I don't know, maybe ten EM to six AM instead, so. Fascinating. They're so great. So we're trying to do it on the central internet, which we all know wasn't good before, so.
Is audio working?
Hers is. This isn't, it's not working at all, it's just spinning.
I just thought sometimes audio might connect with video, doesn't it?
No, it's all the same.
You can't get that to go out over the wifi somehow?
The wifi is down.
That is a problem.
Like it, it works for, it'll work for a couple seconds and then go quick.
Did you get hold of Alyssa?
Um, I got a hold of Rhonda and Rhonda said that Alyssa is on her way.
Thank you.
Perfect. I'm gonna throw it to your email from Hottendee.
Ready to be known? Um, ready to be known, devices are planning on coming in today?
As far as I know, they are planning on being here. Yeah, I put them on today because they, I wanted them to come in yesterday, but they couldn't because they had a doctor appointment or something like that, and so...
Did you give them time?
Uh, I think I, I said eleven.
And is Rusty coming back, do you know?
I think so, yes.
Let me bring the canasta back.
I'm glad you could see. Enjoy your day. Yeah, it's your old timer's a question. I mean, old timer's just an essential, lived here a lot. Yeah, the oldest one in the room, but, um... That, that issue that Silver Glove is dealing with about that tower hanging everywhere, resort, or is it a peak, is that different than... I've heard of Lickout and I've heard of...
Gibbs or Hibbs.
Yeah, is that all the same one at the end of Bunker Hill Road up there?
Yes.
No way we're gonna go into recess. Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Of course, sorry, um...
Well, no, no apologies, ours, ours generally is, uh, we gotta jump on it this morning.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. Same light, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, doing well, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's fantastic. So, health fair is the, the big agenda for us.
Yeah.
So, health fair coming on April seventh. Um, still kinda working out like the exact logistics of what we would like for you all to do when you get there.
Find out.
What? I don't broke that news. I know, you're already counted.
Do we, should we wear frames?
Oh, you can if you want, I'll teach you how to use it.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Um, do you, does it, do any of you have like a specific, what's the word you like to be?
Last year I was agreed to do anything in the world.
I think we kind of have that in mind for you too, still, again.
Because you know I can't get into too much trouble with that.
Well...
Be nice.
That is debatable.
Give us something technical.
All right, so we'll let you know, kind of, we'll be in contact.
If you need someone to run, bring water on to them, okay, whatever.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so, like I said, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that, but the new and exciting thing about health fair this year is we're gonna have a kids... We're gonna be focusing somewhat on kids, so we're gonna have height, weight, and BMI, um, station, um, well, really those will be with the adult stuff, but we're gonna do vision and hearing screens for kiddos. Uh, we're gonna have a dentist there that will actually be able to do fluoridine treatments for kiddos, yeah, um...
Is that a new local that is...
It is, yeah. Well, his wife, I think, is a technician, yeah, she'll be there, so, um... Let's see, I didn't bring those notes from that, um... There's something else for kiddos. Well, the other thing is that, just that the, um, altitude fitness is gonna have kind of a little space where parents can keep, leave their kids while they go get their blood drawn, because kids aren't allowed in the blood draw area. Um, so it's not a babysitting service, it's not like leave your kids there all day, but it's, they can stay there, you can go get your blood drawn with that.
Kind of like a comment, just so my colleagues know this, what happened last year. Last year, we were very backed up, excuse me, we were very backed up at the health fair. Alyssa had just been hired, had not started working. Sorry to tell us to people who matters. She walked in just as, as soon to be health nurse in the county, looked around and saw this huge line for blood draws and other things. Let my vis roll the sleeves up and says, "I'm going to work," and went in and for the rest of the day, did this, and I just want to tell you, this is the quality of the individual we have here, I just wanted to thank you again for that.
Plus, I just kinda like, you know...
I'm like the Pope, he's like...
I probably would for that myself.
They wouldn't let you do it?
No, I know, I volunteered, uh, to draw blood for people.
Yeah?
Good.
And they say, "Come on over, I'll teach you how to do it."
Okay, I get even for all the times I've been called.
Um, so we have ten positive cases of flu in Constable County, um, nine type A and one type B, so... It's, it's just different strains and it's treated the same, it's transmissible, transmitted the same, it's the same amount of, um, contagiousness.
Is it the stuff that's bad that we see?
It's exactly the same. Yeah, so, not too late to get your flu shots and... Nope. I mean, because here's the thing, if you get your flu shot and you still get the flu or you get exposed to the flu, your symptoms are gonna be less and the flu shot actually protects your heart and your respiratory system. You already got yours.
What is?
You haven't got one yet?
I don't get flu shots.
I will see you this afternoon in the officer.
Yes, sir.
What time can you, because I never get one.
I do them whenever, honestly, walk in and I'll leave you a flu shot, I'm not picking about it.
You promised me I'm not gonna get sick from the shot because way back when I would get a flu shot and I'd be sick for three days and I figured, this is crazy, why am I doing this?
Well, you can be sick for three days or you can be sick for three weeks with a horrendous fever and you get home totally...
Have a good answer.
Um... It is, it really is...
Worth doing.
It's worth doing, it knocks down your symptoms, it keeps your symptoms less for a less period of time, and if you do get the flu, it protects your heart and all the things that could be a long-term issue. Okay, um, we, there is a possible whooping cough. In the Amish community. It's not eradicated because people choose not to vaccinate their children.
Is it in school or no?
No, it's in the Amish community.
Okay.
Yeah, so, probably came from the, um, Delmar area, because they definitely have positive cases in that, like, family material from there. Um, subsequently, they're refusing to be tested and refusing treatment, so...
Let me ask you a question, just because I see, unfortunately, how much to be occasionally. So if it gets to the point where the child is in significant danger and the parents refuse, do you have any policy about interfering through court intervention or anything like that, or do you just let it go? I mean, this is a terrible decision that you would have to make, uh, I just don't know.
It's a super sticky thing, the thing is the courts aren't, don't really have any jurisdiction over it because it's a religious choice and because of the separation of church and state, we have no... I mean, they could talk about, it's still their choice, it's still, and it's still their religious belief not to be inoculated.
So, be Human Services battle if they decided they want...
It does become a protection, a child protection services situation in which case they're still protected by their religious rights.
Especially if ideas that court forced to apply to a guardian or something, then the guardian said, "I usurped the parent's power," which I can't really imagine, but who knows?
We dealt with this important, we're with this small population too.
And, and I'm not looking to create an issue, I'm just, I'm very, you know, I worry about kids.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, as do I, so, the best thing to do is just educate, educate, educate on, you know, washing your hands, keeping them isolated so that it doesn't perpetuate, um, you know, and there's a lot of holistic things that they do that are pretty effective, really, I mean, I don't even know what they are, so I can't even advocate for them, but, you know. And, I mean, honestly, as a population who's lived this long, there's, yeah. So, last thing I wanna talk about is I wrote in here that you're welcome to come to our site visits if you want to, it's very minimal, like, here's what we do, we tell them, I have one today at one o'clock, and then the other one is on, the epidemiology one is in March twenty-sixth at ten AM, um...
And who do you visit on that one?
Yeah, what does that mean? So, it's, it's not even a state visit, it's a, the regional folks that help us out, which are tremendously helpful, um, come and they just make sure that my paperwork's in order, that we have our policies correct, that we have, um, you know, our, our emergency plan, today's emergency preparedness, um, so that I have my, my emergency operation plan in order, that we have, you know, we actually have an emergency operation plan.
I see.
Pretty easy, they'll be here like thirty minutes.
So is there, is that like complying to some certification requirement?
It is part of our EPR, which is emergency preparedness grant, yeah, so it's a little purple for that.
Um, just kind of something that came up yesterday, um, wrote, I think they spoke to, did Gary Heiss speak to you about, uh, the...
AED.
Like BEDs?
Oh.
Yeah, he, he was, um, thinking that he'd like to, I think that's obviously a great idea, um, because that's something like you helped us at a wet market a couple with us, something that your grant is still available to me?
It would be, well, we're on different grant cycle now, so yeah, it should be totally fine.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you speak to him?
He did, yeah, and I didn't know, yeah, yeah, I mean, he just sort of like mentioned it literally at the grocery store passing, so...
That's a meeting in mind, remember? Long as he's moving forward.
So, I will, um, I'll get in touch with him and see what he wants, like how many he wants exactly and...
Thank you, thank you, I'll just leave it.
And we'll just get it ordered and get it going.
What did the cost of was AED?
About five fifty per, for one, um, but that is all inclusive too, like we get the pads, um, they do the main, the maintenance on it, you know, like, so we may have to check it once a month and just make sure that, and if anything, like, you actually have to use it when the battery's void, um, so they send you a new battery, so... If the battery runs out because it's just old, so like in three years when the battery's expired, we have to purchase one, but if we use it, oh...
He indicated he was looking for two specific, three shots, so...
Which makes it...
You check those once a month?
Mm-hmm.
So, does somebody check ours here?
I, I check the ones in the, at the Wetmore Community Center.
Um, I think my healthen is in charge of the ones here. Oh, just, I think so, yeah. So you would have to ask.
No, not at all.
He just recently ordered new batteries for the one here or the ones here, didn't he? I kinda remember that.
No.
I know they put new batteries here, you're...
Maybe I'm confused.
Yeah, the, the panic buttons, we've gotten new batteries for.
I know Carmelane checks one at school.
Let's, let's make sure that we all, my checking there or something.
Yeah, because it would be really bad if my kids...
Now follow up, break.
I think there's a little tag on them that has an inspection thing and whatnot. Yeah, because I was thinking it was like once a year. Yeah, like, that's what I thought too.
I think we should try it on, make sure it's working.
How about we try it on you?
Reach out now, talk to Mike.
Okay, I think that's all right.
This afternoon, on an airplane tour, I'm worried about who's got the flu on the airplane, that always gets sick.
An airplane is like a Petri dish.
I know, and I was just writing a book down about the mole in their house, million dollar mansion, it's behind the one, it's a mystery because I can't figure out what's killing them, and it was mole.
So is Medicare, Medicare paid for it if I come over and do that?
I'll see, surprising, like, I am old, it can be, I'm ready. How much, how much give him, a lot if he lives through it, I'll do it.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Appreciate it, we'll see you guys. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Take care of time, all right?
No, I'll be there, well, the, those folks will be there from probably like one to two, so eight to after two would probably be a good idea, I'm glad you're good with that. Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Do you still have my kids at your house? Were they still there this morning?
Um, one of them, I tried to catch them last night. Um, ten is on the timer, um, but I don't know, like, if that means, so two minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, one more, so...
Yeah, they're super sweet too, and they have their jobs, so they shouldn't be spreading like this around. They're towards you. Thank you, yeah, see you guys.
You're already coughing.
Ma'am?
You're already coughing.
I'm afraid I'm already, my immune system's down, I'm gonna get the shot, I'm as sick as a dog. Although my dogs have some...
Supposedly there are no live, um, supposedly, in, yeah, in the flu shot, there's nothing, no live cultures, um...
I got the shot.
I've, I've had that shot every year probably for the past fifteen years and I've never gotten sick from it, and neither have my sisters.
I've never had a flu shot in my, okay.
Love it.
Yeah.
You okay? You better rest.
Yes.
Uh, who's going to recess in six, four, five minutes?
Yes. After you left yesterday, Clint? I was looking for something else and... Ran across the agreement that, um, we have with Vietnam for that same tower, and the cap did not agree, it was only in the ass, um... In there, it shows that easement on there, not very well, but...
The child would probably have that, don't you think, then?
No, he would have probably that because it's IT, but I've got a copy in my office if you want one.
Yeah, I do want to, because that's the next thing I was gonna do is check for Charles, so you got that, you know, see?
I was gonna...
Is that recorded?
No, because it don't record IT, but I, um, in there, and I just, I wasn't even looking for that, I just happened to run across, I was looking for something on the tower, um, and I ran across that one and... Mike, can you lend me?
Yeah, please.
All those make a copy.
Hey, yeah.
Hey, how's your dad? Oh my God, that's...
Get no shirts today?
I have, I have, I had, okay, so, I have...
He's hanging in there.
Uh, did you send this one?
Yeah, Mom's good, as soon as Dad passes, then she'll come back home.
Or did Jack?
Dad, yeah, I'm sure he's on the, you remember the flying commission, I'm guessing? Because I didn't, anyway.
What does some Yankees box?
So is it now, it's from the bakery?
I don't know where it is.
He calls them airport, don't he?
Yeah, I don't think they're from the bakery, but I don't know. Morning, Ken.
Morning, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Is there head scheduling? Cool. I'll try to help you, mine's pretty short. Some snow on the peaks. Yeah, about time, about time. Here or north? Yeah. On the phone. Any more evil smells over in your office?
No, no.
Since they captured this summer, what do you do?
Um, I get different, yeah, and she was like...
My house got a little better, and I don't know, I did something to eat with my medical appointments on, just being powered off, so it's making me breathe better. I had a bed in my office, I said, it was, it was about fifteen minutes, and something, my throat's stretching. All right, can't prove it either way. I've got a couple of pills on there. Been a long time since. Then, once it's a warm, open wounds, back up. Yeah, so, yeah. Ready to sit down?
Call a meeting back in order at ten, ten AM. Next on our agenda is staff report on veteran service office. Kim?
Morning.
Morning. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning, Tim.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Good, you doing? My report's pretty short today, so I'm trying to help you keep the going, man, I'm going. Here's the man, keep it up. I'm off, here's the original.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. All right. I'll start off with the film of monthly report for state. That's in every month. Quick numbers, uh, busy month. January's just been a busy month, so, uh, phone calls, city phone calls, a hundred and four, uh, personal contacts, office visits, did two home visits. We got a vet here in town, Silver Cliff, was contacted by the VA. I've gone and seen him numerous times. He's having more and more dementia, mental issues, living by himself. Uh, so, VA may have to initiate some legal, for protection purposes, cause he refuses to leave the home, but he's at danger to himself. So, um, just let you know.
Is the VA actually there, or something like that?
Boy, it's last resort. They really, they, they, they always hope that at some point, family or someone will intervene and encourage him to go to the veterans' home or something, but he has no family, um, he's by himself. Matter of fact, uh, when I go to visit him a lot, I'm back to reading through this myself every time. He doesn't call, he says, oh, you're that VA guy, I'm sure, or something like that. Um, the nurse just called me last week, said the last time she visited him, last week, he had a memory, so, how come you haven't been there in like six months? She's been sitting there a couple weeks ago, so. And, uh, and he's got, uh, some wound issues, or just hygiene issues that, uh, that lead to some major medical issues that it's not capable of soon, so. So, they always contact me, let me know, be aware, and see if I can help in any way, and, uh, so. So, it's last resort, maybe, maybe that is, is search for the safety of the veteran, so. Um, the other thing is then, I do look at the second page, got a trust fund request for come down to the end, we're almost out of money. Went for the last installment coming in, so it was last month, uh, January, that's the public facility, it's cocaine and so forth. Um, this Friday, I'll talk about it in a minute, we have a meeting with the grant administrator who's coming on Friday. Um, the state is, is screening this program much tighter. Uh, the money's getting tighter. Um, the funding for this grant comes from the tobacco settlement from years ago, so a year. One percent of seven hundred years set aside for this trust fund. This year was two hundred thousand less than it had to spread out, it's probably gonna drop next year. They had a full audit in December, and so they, uh, told us to make sure that we're inquiring about the need more than just the want. So, so, um, there were, so there've been a few vets this year that we've had to turn down. Uh, I'm not happy about it, and then you're, uh, applying with the Legion, Legion has initiated everyone some explanation. And so, the state's getting involved, they come down and explain. So, that means it's Friday at ten thirty. The state, state grant administrator and the director of the board that oversees the grant movement here for that. Um, and then the expenses on the third page, uh, monthly expenses, um, break down. And then the very last page, I always put that extra page shown from the database, the, uh, four forty-three highlighted, uh, each, uh, we, at a ten, that's the first time coming in this last month. So, we continue to grow, and that's about the average, seven, twelve per month is what it seems to be the average for a few vets. And most of those are, most of those are vets who moved here within the last six months. A few, a couple of those who vets have been here quite a while, actually. Is that just in here, or you, you do a lot of work with other areas? Well, the vast majority of vets are from, from here, but I do have a vet in Fremont County. Um, Al, Al continued to grow, just because Al's on part-time down there. Um, and he doesn't have, he's not accredited, he doesn't have access to the system, he can't track the claims. There's a lot of things I can do that he can't do, um, so, especially with vets who have disability claims or if he was pending, eventually, uh, they hear that I have access to the system. I can give them more inside what's going on than Al can, so. So, that's, uh, the big driving force behind that. So, that's the state report, any questions on that? Thank you, if you have a question. DIC, what is that? DIC is death indemnity compensation, that's survivor benefits for spouses. Um, so, if a veteran passed some weight and he was rated by the VA for service accountability, there's different very qualifiers, depending on how long he was rated, whether he's hundred percent, not hundred percent. But if they determine it as a service connected death, it's a loss, and it's owed for benefits, which includes a monthly compensation, roughly twelve to thirteen hundred dollars a month. Um, if he's been rated hundred percent for over ten years, they get an enhanced version, it's about fifteen something a month. Plus, they get Champ VA benefits. Champ VA is an X, if they're on Medicare particularly, X, like a Medicare supplement, and no cost, and it pays off all the tax bills and twenty percent, so, so. That's certainly a part of service accountability. I'm hopefully accept the current two thousand and eighteen, uh, veteran service office monthly report estimate. Yeah, I'll say.
In the segment, uh, sorry. To approve the DSO report, uh, discussion. Can you talk money on the VTF request? Are you allowed to share with us what that hundred dollar is, and that's on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I don't have a break time. At the beginning of the grant year, July, the VFW notified we were through the forty thousand dollar. Uh, we spent over thirty.
For our campaign?
For our campaign.
Okay.
For, for, so, um, we're probably down to about six or seven, depends, we ran less than that. I know they spent over thirty dollars so far. So, probably gonna have about six thousand on this last installment. Uh, and that's probably the hardest about this grant program is, uh, they, they notify in July, here's when you might get it, but then it's a installment, so, so the program can stop and go, stop and go, stop and go. Sometimes it takes two weeks to get the next installment, sometimes it takes a month. Um, we, um, we're at the ones a month now, when it's probably, we just gotta notify probably the first week of March for the next installment.
And that'll go through July, then your fiscal year starts over?
Right, so, the grant application deadline is one March. Uh, Ivan and VFW, Ivan Brooks already has the application in, and then they'll announce in July if it's approved. And if approved, and how much, we pretty requested for a certain amount, sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't get the full amount, so. And then usually, because the state is on, well, the July is fiscal year starts, and then at some point, use it August, sometimes when the first installment gets released.
Does some of that VTF money go to Fremont County vets?
Well, they come up here, now, they come in, it's code taxi, uh, primarily. We don't have, I don't, I don't, we haven't had anyone come up from King City itself for money, um, that I'm aware of.
But even if it's allocated to you, just.
Yeah.
Press your hand.
Well, it's, it's for any, any veteran in the state that comes to see us, but we have a signed statement that they just will not apply in other halls in the state. So, we're not allowed if it comes shopping, coming to county, so. The only, I, I think American Legion Florence, they got a small amount this year, but I don't think anyone in your legion would ever down there that much. So, uh, the priority is to, that's the kind of vets. But like I said, where we're at, code tax, it's just pretty, you know, they consider themselves a part of this community, really hard to do, they come here for all their services and, and shopping, so. So, so, you know, it's not opportunistic to say, no, you're not, you're in another county, but we do, we do have a statement that is signed, we will not apply in another county. Because that, that does get picked up, they, they started seeing that, that they will catch it, I hope that they will. So, every application we do, the way this kind of works is we're, we're kind of, they come in, they see me, do the pre-screening, what's the need, so on and so forth. And then Ivan, uh, issues a check and so forth, but those applications still go through the state for final verification. And we did have one this year that the state contacted us back and said, oop, gave us that money back, they weren't able to. Um, they, they didn't need it, they wanted, they, something on the, the license bill triggered them to ask a question, they called the vet. Uh, and said, hey, here's one using them, just kind of help, part of the bill was for his expense of the barn for the horses. So, the state said, uh, you don't need it that much, so, okay. Long story, but anyway, so, so that's why, and so state is cracking down, and, and they're telling us we have to ask for more tougher questions. There's not a means test for, but we'll start asking, where's your monthly income? As a means test, as an indicator. So, the vet comes in, which I had recently, uh, but this is not unusual, where you live now, what's your monthly income? Nine hundred dollars a month, or a hundred dollars a month? There's no question, they can help, okay? They come in and say, hey, my fine household income is eighty thousand dollars here. Okay, now you're gonna have to write a statement, cause you could have all kinds of things going on and still have a need, but that, that, you're gonna have to explain it more in detail.
And how do they verify their income to your office?
Yeah, for the Legion, it's just gonna be, yeah, it's just gonna be based on what they say, there is no requirement, there is no means test on this, um, so, um, but if we do somehow find out the, the claim. The one thing about it is the ones that I, that are telling me nine, eleven, twelve, I know, I know. We just know, we've been around a long time, and we know.
Obviously, the counties by statutory law require to provide veteran service office in every county.
Yes.
Uh, I, I find it interesting that our county's providing services to other counties' veterans.
It's not unusual.
And you say that it can, you don't have the authority to turn down those requests for service from non-county veterans.
And, and if I was asked to, I would quit, huh?
Yeah.
So, it's just, so. If that comes in, he has a need, you know, we, we have trains that come through the area in the summer, not a lot, but once a while. They work around Texas, I'm just, I'm, you know, took work, work, and I'm here, and maybe you'll be here for a couple weeks. If we can help, we use Miami funding, but I'll point more repair and share, and we'll try to give down a Mount Carmel in the Springs, City Housing, and those type of things, but, you know. We aren't, you know, that needs help, and help where we can, can't fix it all. Uh, probably the biggest challenge up here is, uh, vets move up here without doing much research on services. Uh, they get up here and then they find a little crap that closes, they live in our way. I need to go once a week, I'm paid, I don't pay, I need a ride. Well, what we got is a roadie, and the roadie does what they can, and they're doing a job of that. You know, that's, it happened more once, needs are pretty great, and they make a decision, I've seen that's why, small, little, whatever, you know, off the internet, it's like in the same. And they get here, let's have them, and then they get here and they're shocked, that we don't have a clinic, but we get a clinic here, okay? So, we can't fix it all, and never will be able to, uh, we do what we can, where we can. Uh, my primary mission is to help them now get through the VA system, that is my primary mission. Um, the veteran trust fund is something that the state provides. Our office in collaboration, it's, it's a win-win situation by supporting that program, brings vets through my office, and some of these vets, for the only time I see them, this is once a year, and they're staying pretty well. Out of sight, most here, and then they come in and get three hundred dollars for two cores of wood, I don't know. And that's my one chance once a year to kind of, so, so collaboratively, and, and we, it's gone so well the last couple of years, that the state, matter of fact, from Yale, from Yale, from Warburg, from Comptanta, and Friday, um, to the grant administrator. Um, the way we're operating here is kind of, I'll assume like a similar kind of decaporate the trust fund, collaborate to the DSO, office and, and the Legion, or the VA, but it was a nonprofit that's actually, they didn't fund. So, so that's, it's kind of the model that she's really presenting to the board, to rest a composition trial state. Any questions on that?
We do have a motion.
Uh, the only other thing I'll mention, uh, Homebase Primary Care Program, which I mentioned, uh, Rosemary, who's great, um, and this has been an education for me, my dad's been in the program for last year and a half. Uh, so I got a chance to learn a lot about that program. It's a program that, that veterans are pretty much homebound, and, uh, they will come in and send in this practice grand, if, if they're in the line of some patients, which we have some parts of value that fall by, some parts of value don't. The sixty mile limit from the clinic down the block, okay? Uh, but my dad was, uh, who's now living in, he's moving to, to a family nursing home down Hillbran, my mom died down there. But the care that he received from her, we did say this when we go downhill, getting his pain meds and all these things, probably set this fifteen trips downhill last year easy. Um, and then she helped refer him over to the hospice facility and so forth, and, uh, moved my mom dead down Hillbran, because the VA does cover hospice care, my dad's cluster hospice care, that's the cost my dad's sharing on Hillbran. So, 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 uh, that was an education for me, as far as that goes. Um, so, I just, one of the things, trying to get out there, a lot of veterans, um, you know, Ann and Joe, Oregon, they moved them up to Carolina this year, but Joe was on that program for a couple of years, and that really was a vice they were, as they were trying to turn. April's coming up, right around the corner, um, and a training conference, uh, that's required that I attend, that is a state training conference. We go from ten through thirteen. And then last thing, um, I'm, I'm with Department of One, give you the personnel update. I went and had a scope down on the tent, I don't know if you guys mentioned, Moshe, but I thought I did update. Um, been doing a lot of testing consultations and so forth, did CAT scan on Friday, got the results yesterday, and it's non-cancer. So, a good few news on that, just before we come out. Um, did a full stress test on Monday, I have to be so clear for, for surgery, and we've got two surgeries coming up. The twenty-first this month will be the first one, is I've got a angioperia that I put off until we knew what we were reporting. Probably it was the tumor, which we knew for sure, so, not the tumors benign, I can push that back a little bit, the angioperia fixed first, it's getting to the twenty-first, I'll be out for a week, do that, then we'll probably turn around and end the April, and schedule the other surgery, so. Bless you.
Good news?
Good news, so, now I just have to go back to, uh, Monday, we did all the cardiology, nuclear imaging, echocardiogram, and stress test, the whole deal, took about five hours, so I have to back for a consult. I had some other issues happening prior to the finding about the tumor, had some blood pressure spikes issue, so, blood pressure's something about that. So, we'll, uh, have to clear by the cardiology, but we're gonna serve you, so, that's the personnel, it sounds like I got to know.
We have an motion before the board, uh, and that is to approve your report, uh, we're still in the period of discussion on that. I had asked last time that you correct, uh, my name as the chairman of this, I see that's not happened, I will sign it today, but, uh, yeah, no S on flower. So, and secondly, then, I would request that, we have a signature line on this page. You know, similar to this right here, we can just scroll down and put a signature line in.
I'll, I'll check the state, the state one, so, I'll have to see.
I'll sign it today.
Okay.
Subsequent to this is not correct, and I probably will not sign it, I will postpone it until it's, until it's correct. Uh, all, any further discussion? Left report here, none of proceed.
What, what question?
Okay, all in favor of approving the report from DSO, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, opposed name? Motion carried, we accept it.
While you do that, if I could ask a question. I, I brought this up a while back, but it's always been a concern a lot. And is confidentiality and privacy, the physical space that your offices in, do you, do you feel adequate? No, it's better than when I first started, um, but it's not ideal. Um, you know, um, if you're waiting at a waiting area, if someone comes in, you can, you can hear most of the conversation. That's what I was afraid of. Um, but it's what I've been given. Uh, when I first started, I made a proposal to separate, have separate entrances, separate those two areas without, and soundproof a wall, separate the two areas. But not possible, not feasible, not possible, just due to various reasons, so, um, so we went through. Cause the way it sat was at first was even worse, because there was, the glass door was not there, so I had no expectancy was coming or going. Um, it was really totally dysfunctional, so, I had to do most of it as private connections that, that helps make those arrangements and so forth. Um, my hope is still, um, I might find a different location, find. My hope is still, I might find a different location, find some funding, with its grants, rubber, and purchase an actually separate location. Most times, because there's no meetings every day, but there's still traffic coming and going, people have swords downstairs, and there's just people come and go. And as vets are waiting outside, it's not unusual where I have a vet come in after, you've been waiting fifteen, twenty minutes.
I heard you say, you know, can you tell me more about what you told the veteran from?
So, probably how to comply.
Do you have, or are you tracking county versus non-county visits?
No, no, I can, if you'd like.
You know, my concern is this, Tim, that if, let's use the trust fund dollars for example. We run out of trust fund dollars, okay, I get that. I guess my question is, where's our allegiance, is it to our county vets first? Because this is a county office, we're not funded to take care of other counties' veterans. So if our county veterans are denied services because we have graciously offered services to non-county vets, I think that puts us in an awkward position.
Well, let me check with Gail, Gail will be here Friday.
And I won't be able to go to that meeting, I'll be out of town.
Okay, I'll bring that up with her, because my understanding has been with this program that we, if a vet comes in and is in need, we're required, you know, as a need with this program. But at the same time, they are required, you know, by the, you caught shopping out, not only will you, you will be permanently banned from, from the city. It has happened in the past, last year they had an elderly couple, up in the Denver area, Bounce County County, and no one, no one even questioned them. Because, you know, seventy seven year old, super creative guy, a grand, who looked like a grandfather, said he was a vet. And they found out, and he was Bounce County County, never served again.
Our county's funded, then, because the, you said Fremont County was part-time.
Yeah.
So how do they, how do they allocate funds to part-time duty?
Well, it's about, it's about half of what we're getting, I'm sorry, it gets cut back. So right in nineteen fifty a month, so you get about half.
So they get twice as many vets?
Oh, more than that.
That doesn't add up.
No, and that's a decision for county commissioners, they get to see. But a lot of that has to do with the VSO to decide to kind of push that issue. When I started, I was part-time, first thirty days in, I, I, there's no way to do this after I, kind of, part-time basis. Even though our numbers are smaller, if you're trying to provide, especially, the time is simply part of my job, is in the service, because it's really clinical.
Might be four counties.
Well, yeah, we're spending dollars to fund our VSO office on a full-time position, and now we're starting to service their people, they're never going to go to full-time.
Not very much has a history of putting all that other counties there.
And the good news is, because of what's happened here, we're from counties that swing full-time. They just swing to thirty-five hours in the last month. They've been eight hours a week. And so they had new commissioner coming down there, who's not a vet, but he was kind of curious about the program. So we had some folks who were here, were joining the legion down there, and they started talking about a VSO office up there, fully full-time, you actually have lots of new vets. And started a conversation, the commissioner looked into it, he contacted the state. So what do we have to do? Go full-time, and they did, and that's what needs to happen.
I think if we're servicing non-county vets, we should be compensated, certainly we should have an intergovernmental agreement.
No, it happens all the way, you get couple of vets with the springs, springs vets go to Denver. I mean, it's just, it's just.
That's okay, they need to look at traffic flow and they're funded accordingly. I can understand, can't limit the tax, that's okay.
No.
But you can sure can share the funding.
Well, I think, remember, three years ago I started, the state was giving a hundred dollars a month for the time, and I was two hundred for full-time. So it's only lasted three years, I think, any funding at all, so, so this is still fairly new. And I know that, that state.
We're talking about it.
But that was the funding that I gave at the time, and it just, it had happened that when I got hired, April thirteenth, when this conference ended, and I announced the funding, and I wrote the president, and then by August, without that funding, I probably said, it's part-time.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I would like under your office visits to break that out into county and non-county visits. I'm not trying to hang anybody, and it's not an issue now, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't have the potential to become an issue, where we just cannot afford to service our own vets when our adjoining counties are not doing their job. It's not that I think you're doing something you shouldn't be. But other counties need to step up and do their job, and I think it primarily is people there.
Yeah, yeah, Clay Ford and Paxer will always from here, that's just more than you need. So that's going to be part of it, but you know, a few, a few of them working now, I got a couple in town coming to work.
Well, maybe as a board, we need to have some communication, at least Fremont County, or Board of County Commissioners. Because just because they're doing it, doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean it'll continue to be right.
My, yeah, my can be easily, in my opinion, this is my opinion, but they should be fully funded, so probably we'll add an assistant down there. Because if we work that out, they would credit that to us, or something else, and did some, I guess, some paperwork, and actually started doing some, some repatriation.
And I think it's probably incumbent upon us to carry that message to them, because it's impacting our county. It may not be huge right now, but it could be, so, all right, Chuck, all right, thank you.
Tim, thank you.
Glad to give that, glad to take care of it.
Glad to go down there.
Counsel with the cardiologist, so. As they talked about, ladies were going to paint that wall over there, do you know if that's still in our works?
Yeah, um, yeah, my, okay, yeah.
Because I told our maintenance person that that was probably going to be done by.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's ready, I was just waiting for the word that it's, I believe it is, I was waiting for it to take off, because we got some painting up, so. Yeah, that's what they told me, they're looking to make it good, so take care of it.
All right, thank you, sir, have a great day.
You too.
Are you the Rises?
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, Public Health was scheduled, or sorry, Human Services was scheduled at eleven. Are you okay with moving our new business item up?
Yep.
And dealing with that now, or?
Of course.
So why don't we, tell you what, why don't we table our staff reports, and we'll move in the new business, is that fair enough? Okay, very good, welcome.
How you doing? We say John, haven't seen you forever. Good to see you.
How you been?
Good. You've been busy.
Long time.
Yes, it has, it has.
John, Tom Flower.
I met you once when Gary and I parked our machines out there.
Okay, yes, yes, I remember.
Linda Rice.
Hi, Linda. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. This is our attorney, county attorney. If you have not met, Clint Spinn, have a seat, Mr. John and Linda Rice, and she's got, Kelly's got another chair for you.
Oh, welcome, thank you.
Good to sit in the Inquisitor seat.
Well, I'm glad he's in that one, I'm in that.
You want electric wiring?
That's the notch, that's what I was thinking.
Long as you don't let your wiring on this all down.
Right, right.
Only to my electric person's injection.
And where are you folks live?
Yeah, well.
Impala.
Are you related to the Rises up here?
Yeah, I was raised up here. I was born and raised up here.
Got to school with him back in the olden days.
Really, he looks my champion.
That's always my problem.
Well, I kind of put this together, the plan is pretty much, kind of, I email. Then at the bottom is, I guess, basically our agenda today, to discuss if there is any need, what we considered you might have.
You might describe to everybody where this is, I know where it is.
They have maps here.
Yeah, there should be a map in that packet there that shows exactly, because where your landfill, where your gravel pit's at right now, it goes directly south. We're down to Wounded Grove.
It's basically this square, I guess, is it?
It's a corner.
Yeah, it's at the back.
You can see it there. This here shows, yeah, your landfill, your gravel pit, green leaf, and sawmill, and this is the property right here.
So what we thought is if the county only needs eighty, we would do that. But if you wanted the whole one sixty, it's about that square. There's an additional part of here that we can do also, we just don't know.
This is your plate, we're just here.
Just everything in that dark.
Everything in the dark, yeah.
Everything in the dark. We just kind of did the box to show what we were presenting to you, not knowing what you needed to be, that's a direct, it's adjacent to what you kind of have, but. Yeah, we can put on here inside those dark boxes is what we want. So it's a total, like, six hundred and sixty-seven acres, but there'd be four hundred available.
It's a hundred and sixty plus whatever.
Yeah, if you want more than a hundred and sixty, then we'd have to come this way with it. But I'm not sure how much of it you want, what you want. And it was a phrase of a thousand acres. All right. It was a thousand acres. We know there should be the same amount of gravel under here as what you've got here, but if you guys, we have to, that big old hill's right here, on that fence. And if you guys want to go in there with the back hole and dig test holes, as long as we cover them back up like you do, I don't care.
You could just take the fence, the elements are too much.
It should be a bead right here.
Oh, that's right, you said that.
It should be a bead right here, the hole I'm sure is, it could be wired, it could shut up. Anyway, you want to, to go and get in there, and just, if you want to go in there with the back hole and dig it and see what's there.
You mentioned a right-of-way you might consider, where would you do it?
You're taking it in, I'll bring it in to here. Somewhere along here, west boundary.
That's our.
If you just cut us a road off here, if you could cut us a road and give us access, and he's went into the backside of the property here.
Could drain it.
So we'd cut that down to nine hundred acres. I think that's pretty fair.
And where's your access to this large piece of property now?
It comes off here, comes off sixty-nine, it comes up here.
So if we were to take more of it out of here, that's another reason you'd want a right-of-way.
Right.
And is this property currently listed?
No.
For sale?
We presented it to you before we did that.
I think we got a lot of trash up here, do you?
Well, we're just, you know, I know that a pebble that, which is.
Commodity.
Oh, yeah, there was, it's ruined.
What are you, what are you using this one for, in the thought? There was a receipt on the, on the writer.
Writer, very tall.
Yeah. Oh, okay, that's one of the best, okay, thank you.
The map, we actually had a surveyor look at this, and he actually drew this map for us, so it wasn't something we did. But to copy it, it would come out dark, but that is part of the, the religious adjuvancy.
Yeah, you can see the end, just due south of the current.
Right.
You have to back upside down, sorry. You've got, lucky you're sitting in the right place, because you got oriented though.
Yeah.
That is green leaf forested, you put it up.
I got it, it has landfill, and we own the property to the east of the landfill, so.
Oh, do you?
So that's expandable if we have needed.
And do you know who owns this property?
I'm not sure who's got that. John Rushin for a while was putting his cattle on there, but a lot of them, his cattle are anywhere in here.
He probably knows where they are.
He might know, but I'm not really sure who owns this.
Know anything about the permitting process for expansion of the landfill? There has to be a joint landowner, it's, I just don't know that, so.
You know, we've broached that subject multiple times in the past, and the process of expanding what is currently a landfill is a significant process, and it's EPA, and it's a multi-year process, and that's why I've always been concerned with you to start now. Because we're going to run out of landfill. That's right. The next few years.
So this is a hundred and sixty acres?
Yes, that's what, because last year, the surveyor, he said, well, it should be, according to the marks, he said that should be a hundred and sixty. He didn't survey to make sure, and plus their line is one sixty.
And if I understood you correctly, if we provided an easement from the county road down,
Yes.
then you would deduct some off of your.
Yes.
Alan, this is not, we're not trying to wheel and deal with them. How flexible are you in that, have you heard, they say, it's going to take some time?
Right.
And how quickly are you trying to turn this?
It's very good, yeah. If you got to tell that, I don't know if you would be just purchasing it outright, or wanting my payments, or?
Well, that's, that's another piece, and that's going to be discussed later, but how flexible are you on that? I mean, that's an income, loan, whatever.
Right.
How are you?
Well, the only thing we figured is if you can pay it off in two years, I think that would be a possibility, I don't know what your finances are.
You know how poor Custer County is. Maybe you should talk to the county.
Well, I guess we.
I did say we weren't trying to see a little wheel there, so, just, just wanted to get the picture of it like that. I think it's nice that you took the time to consider taking it to us before you put it on the, on the market, that's a good thing, given its location.
Yeah, we didn't know, like, John and I had kind of discussed where you had mentioned financing, and we called him the other day, we didn't know, like, if you're interested in more than the eighty, because that's the minimum we would set, was the eighty, because we know, so what's the max?
We want a long-range plan as much as we can, or as much as we can afford.
Right.
So we'll have to look at it, or should I think of, yeah.
And that would be ideal for you guys, just to be able to go, you know, take your fence down and just keep going south. Because this here is all brand-new fence, along this east side here, it's just that they have, oh, fifteen-year course, so, and moved it back for the Denver quarter mile. Fence was tight, so.
They never are.
No.
Does the land use or anything now, or is it grazing?
No.
Just grazing, yeah, yeah.
Got at least. Are there any wells or anything on it?
There's not on this piece here, there's only well on the whole property, so we're.
You're not aware of any easements that are currently restricted use of the property?
Shouldn't be.
No.
Okay.
Because there's one cleaning here years ago, on this, down here, where it come out of the old gravel pit, and went right up along the top of that bluff, and came up to about, uh, right here. But we don't know if this easement here is even usable now.
And it's on this other map that you, John's talking about, it's on that.
It's not on the D.
No.
It's not on the D, but we can step one down, because it's really, it's right here.
It may have been the old highway.
And they came, came up into here, and that's what Dad tried to do when he was a commissioner. He wanted them to take the highway and put it up on top of the bluff, and get it out of down here and follow it anyway, but they.
Would have been nice for cell phone coverage.
Yeah.
You would ask about lease, it's not under a current lease, but John has been working with the same people for.
Eight year to year.
Yeah.
How long, when I, and last year I didn't, we didn't do it, because these cows have taken it down quite a bit, and he did really good about pulling a bunch of them out of there. So last year it just sat and rested, so it's got some good.
Pretty good. There's Mr. Landfill in the back, have you met Russ?
Hi, thank you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Hi, Linda Rice.
Hi.
All of this property's for sale, obviously our, our property right here, this is a hundred and seventeen acres south, there's another map in front of you, if you want to look at that.
Are you looking at aerial map? The easement comes off the county road, and get in here, keep some of this, drive in there, trade, hundred bucks off one acre on that.
A lot of wildlife hangs out in there.
Are you going to get your rifle out?
Yeah, I'm a country.
An alloparyum.
There was no cattle here last year, so I just went ahead.
That's why it's grazed down, the alloparyum.
There was no danger, so they just multiply.
So we just take this under the brush?
Yeah, we got to figure it out. Figure out what we're, our plan is. I really appreciate you taking the time.
To a lot of trouble.
Like I say, if I actually, if I could come in right here, any place on this, this here, right here close.
That would be a deed to easement in the event you sold this property there at all.
Yeah.
That's just fenced on the east side, right?
Yeah, the fence comes in.
It's fenced on the east side, yeah.
Is that you, Lynn?
That's me, yeah, your first.
Your first to be quiet.
Yes, exactly. I forgot to shut it off or it'd be in the car.
This is my husband, County Hall's east of the landfill.
It's 20 acres east of the landfill.
Do we on? If you have one, that's fine. I just love ending off topic.
Right offhand.
Timing wise, too, was a question for us to get.
Actually, Cypress Hall Road is on county property. So they go through, gave it an easement, I guess, some years back anyway, they go right to their pit. From 328. That's the one that goes in about 300 yards. I think that's the gate here to have you.
Okay, well, thank you folks. Appreciate it. We're actually at, we have a landfill workshop scheduled. At the end of Monday, we may just try to sit down.
Send. 28?
Oh, it's at our meeting. That's what it's got named for, so. Yeah, we could certainly have some food discussion. At that time and.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. I wanted to try to put some other things. I know they're not selling comparables. But at least there are some comparables that you definitely are. We're not overpricing it for sure. Any appraisal for the thousand dollars?
You don't want to take a bath on it?
No.
Neither do we.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate you.
All right.
See you, John.
Long time since you've all tried for your dad.
Yeah, that's true. It's been 40 years.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, maybe.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
So that's nice of you.
Good of you, too. A chap person. The literal chap person. Chap person.
While we're waiting, um, just for the sake of time, gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'd like to share with you another, uh, situation I ran into. I don't know what the deal is, but I would like for us to pursue, at least to get some information. And that concerns our clinic. I had made a doctor's appointment with the eye doctor who comes up here frequently and sees patients. And had an appointment and went over and, uh, was there for my appointment and explained to them that, of course, asked for insurance. And I said, I was calling county insurance. And they partnered for me. They don't take the county insurance division. And I struggled with that. As a citizen, I really struggled with that. And as a county commissioner, I'm somewhat, was taken aback by that whole thing. If our own clinic does not accept our own county insurance.
I agree.
I think we need to have a conversation with their administrator. Would you?
I agree.
Do we have other thoughts about that?
I think we should invite him. Just me instead of the one rule, but maybe at the end of the month, let's invite a visionary.
Are you talking about the vision? Yeah. I, I don't know if that's something between Claflin and the clinic that needs to be worked out.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Claflin was aware of that, but he certainly couldn't address the issues. I have no idea why they would do that, so.
Just.
A just vision is my understanding now. Obviously, I haven't gone to a local new local dentist, but I'm assuming he probably does honor our insurance. But medical, they, they honor medical insurance. So.
It might, it might be that they just don't want to do Claflin's work for him.
Yeah.
That's just.
They're doing everybody else's insurance work for the other. I don't know. But I'd like to have that conversation and if we can, uh, extend that invitation to the director at our.
Does the dentist up here take insurance?
I didn't, I didn't even know there was a dentist here. Is it just new?
Kyle Schultz.
Kyle Schultz.
I think we've already talked about that and he does.
So, anyway, just was a topic that I wanted to bring up while we were waiting for this young lady.
Oh, I know, that's okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to say on this Claflin thing, I think it's, um, that Brenda's right. The clinic does not want to have to bill.
Be the administrator for it.
Bill the insurance for that. And Dr. Hunter, who comes up, or he's come up part-time from Salida, who's an orthopedic. And when I went to see him at the clinic, he had a person there that took my information for me and billed it through their office.
They're not amused.
Not through the clinic.
Right.
Okay, so I don't know if that's something that's going on with Claflin because, you know, it's not really the clinic's job to bill for Claflin. And maybe that's why they don't want to do.
It's a county service.
I don't, I don't know.
I bet you know. I have some.
Yeah, I know. But I just wanted to fill you in on how it worked with Dr. Hunter because they didn't bill either. They got, took my insurance. She made me fill out a form from Dr. Hunter's office. And then they billed it themselves.
Yeah, I, I don't either. That's why we want to have a conversation. I mean, I know they bill other insurances. So whether they want to, they don't want to, or whatever, I guess that's.
Yeah, but they bill all their insurance for services at the clinic, not for.
For an outside.
For an outside contractor.
If they're not willing to do that, then I would question why we even have him up here.
Well, that's, that's a good point.
I just.
I would, I don't know why he couldn't have you contact his office in Canyon and give him your information. They'd bill it for you to see how much.
I don't know why they wouldn't do that.
I think we should ask them.
But, yeah, I think those are. Rock, now you, thank you.
Okay.
You are actually the only one that's been on schedule.
Well, yeah, we should call. And I was at another meeting because I told Brenda I won't be back until eleven.
We've been ahead of schedule all morning to go here.
Actually, we're ahead because we did rights.
That's true. Yeah. And on our staff reports, we've been.
Oh, I'm here, okay.
A bit early all morning, so you're the only one that is actually.
Yeah.
In our time slot.
And I could have come earlier, but I wasn't here. I was at my other meeting, so.
I can be in here.
Oh, that's my pleasure.
That's a good idea.
And not really, but no.
I got a full park.
Yeah, and since we didn't meet in November, I mean, January, I had Brenda send you the November confusing report. And then here, and then she sent you the December confusing report, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And one of the things, and it's hard to see on the report, but in November was our first, I just.
I've got six or seven different documents.
Oh, yes, you do.
So we need to see which one you were talking about.
Oh, right now, I was just going to tell you something that you.
Oh, okay.
And, um, we have our LEAK program, which is, um, starts November 1st and it runs through April. And we start taking payroll, I mean, applications for that in October. And that, and at the end of November, we, the actual first payroll went out. And we had 127, um, people that received payments, hoping $41,411.72.
And that's the Energy Assistance Program?
Yeah, that's the LEAK program. So I just wanted to let you know that, yeah, we, we had a lot of people that were on that first payroll because we really tried hard to get everybody on that first payroll.
The amount you did, I'm sorry?
Don't forget that 72 cents.
And how many people?
I don't know how many people. That's households.
Oh, okay. How about that?
House, households, 127.
127, thank you.
127 households for that one. Now, the next ones you'll see are not that big because that's our big question. So we do about 200 and some households in that type, type area from November to April.
Is it different than much? Is it the same?
It's, it varies, you know. Um, I'd have to go back and see what we've done in previous years, but it runs about 200 households for that, um, type area, which is quite a few, actually. You know, we haven't been hit as hard as some years for emergency services because it hasn't been snowy and cold. And you're not seeing the very high electric bills and stuff, but we do ourselves our energy outreach money. And I've got a little bit of community service block grant money, so we're, we're doing fine. Okay. So, back to this lovely.
What's the title on it?
It's just called, uh, expenditure and unexpendable balance. And it's very confusing. And I know I'm going to work on this form before, starting next month, which would be the actual January. But if you look at it, we were fine on all of our money. So we didn't overspend anything. Okay, so that's all. Everything's fine. So you don't have to try to figure that out. I just wanted to let you know on that. And I have to talk to.
So can I do this?
I know. It's very confusing. It's very confusing and that's why I'm just telling you everything is fine.
Everything's okay.
And you don't need to worry about it. Although we did get a weird thing yesterday. I got a 1099 miscellaneous from the. Because we don't file income tax, so I'm like, why am I getting this? And it came from healthcare policy and I finance, which does our Medicaid. And it was for $21,000. It says this is, you know, and we're like, what is this? And I still am not sure, but I have a meeting next week and I'm going to find out. But what we think it is, is we, a reimbursement, people come in, if they're on Medicaid, we can do Medicaid transportation. We can allow them to go to the doctor. We reimburse them for travel. And then we submit that to healthcare policy and finance. So we're thinking maybe that's why we're getting that. We've been doing this program for years. This is the first year we ever got a 1099 miscellaneous. And so we went, um, we went back through and added up the amount of money that we, you know, that we paid. Not we, but healthcare policy and finance. And it came out, I added up like 19,000 or something, and Ronnie was going to do it again and so I don't know. But we didn't come up with a number that they say is on that thing, so. It's a little weird to me. Never had that before, but we'll be finding out why we got that. Because I, we don't file income tax. We get that.
I hope they're not expecting you to allocate it back to the people who got it.
Oh, well, no, because it's not broke out. We wouldn't be able to know that.
I mean, I was the only thing.
Yeah, I feel that. Why would they spend, why would they spend that to that? It made absolutely no sense. And I'm like, I don't know. So at my meeting that I'm going to be at, Representative from Medicaid will be there. So I'm going to ask him.
Wonderful.
What in the world is this about? Crazy, wonderful. And, yeah, and then this one here is our community service block app that I was just talking about. And it just shows our expenditures and we're fine on that. And this is our energy outreach Colorado. And same thing, this is just the grant and then on that. And then Ron always sends the stuff about, um, food assistance, how many we had in length months. And it's just information and stuff. So you probably don't even want to have this stuff. And that's okay with me if I have this stuff.
Well, we've got it electronically, so.
Yeah.
I actually compare these month to month, just to see if they're, you know, what I consider anomalies.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
So I, I like to get them.
Okay, that's fine. I don't have problems sending them at all, so.
And I'll tell you the truth, most of them, I said, they're like, gosh, I don't know what to head this is for. I mean, they mean really.
Yeah, right. This, you know, like the food stamps just shows, it just shows a chart of how, you know, what the benefits are. Just a graph on that, you know, how these things go. And, um, Tom had gotten, uh, received an email from food assistants about filling out a questionnaire. And he says, do I need to fill this out? And I said, no, I'm going to fill it out. And what that's about is not only food assistants, but what that's about, and I, he was going to go to CCI. You go to CCI, did they mention anything?
No.
No, okay. Well, what this is about is they're talking about increasing the poverty guideline for the food assistants. Because they felt like some of the people that were being denied because their income is over still need the help, so they were talking about doing that. That was part of it. The concerns that other counties have is that if we increase the number, you know, more people are eligible, then our workload goes up. And if our workload goes up, that means we have to hire more help. And if we have to hire more help, they need to give us more money to do that. And.
We need to buy a bigger building.
And, and that was brought up by other, other department head, you know, other counties too. That if we keep adding, then we're going to have to have, well, county just moved into a new building. And he's already saying, you know, if they do this, it's going to increase our caseload more. And I'm already building a new building. I'm busting at the seams. So that's still a debate on what they're going to do with that. The other thing is tanna, our temporary assistance for needy families. We get an allocation for that. And the amount of money that households gets is low. Like if it's a single mom with one child, they only get $364 a month. That's all they get. So they're talking about raising that guideline, not guideline, but raising the amount that we would give them. Our concern about that again is that we receive an allocation. And if we don't raise that allocation, then where's that money going to come from? So we have reserves. Each county, we can keep a certain amount of money. If we don't use all of our town allocation this year, we can carry it over, just in case something happens next year. And so, you know, they're going, well, you can dip in your reserves. Well, we can't dip in them like us. We have a cap. We can only carry over 100,000. And so we're going. You know, we don't know that this is a good idea because you're going to put a strain on, on this. And some counties are already dipping into their reserves. They don't have enough money. Then if somebody has reserves, they'll contact another county and say, can I buy some tanna from you? You know, and so that's a concern. So that's what that's all about. They're still negotiating that.
Yeah, there is legislation on, on the floor about the whole, uh, state tanna reserve.
Oh, yeah.
And so.
Yeah. And some of the counties that have had, like El Paso and one on the other side of the valley, where they've had some severe wildfires, they had to use some of their tanna reserves to handle those wildfires. And, you know, she goes, if that happens again and they take our reserves and we don't have them, we're in deep, we're in deep trouble. So they need to raise that allocation. So I don't know what they're going to do with it. Yeah. So that's about the biggest thing we have going on right now, so.
Can I ask you a question after that, please?
Uh huh.
I'm looking at the allocation we have for daycare.
Uh huh.
And I don't think we have many daycare facilities.
No.
What is, how does that work? I mean, if we don't have a facility for daycare, is it just we pay people to come into someone's home and watch their kid?
Right. We have licensed daycares. We have two licensed daycares.
Right.
And so we do, we pay, we, um, they have to apply, they have to determine eligibility. And then we determine how much, everybody has to pay a certain amount, okay? But then we'll pick up the remainder. So let's say, I don't know, their parental fee is $100. But daycare for that month is $300. They pay the 100, we pay the 200. And that's how it works. But they have to be income eligible. And, and then the amount of fee is determined by how many in the household, what their income is, and that type of stuff. So that's how that works.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
So we have a.
Yeah. That, that's how that one works.
Okay, so let me ask a question I ask every single month. Any anomalies? Anything going on that we don't know about? I mean, because I really choose to have a hard time.
Oh, I totally understand. That's why I'm telling you.
Anything.
We're good to go.
Okay, that's all I care about.
We're, we're good to go. We were under budget and everything was fine. And so.
Good report.
So, everything's okay right now. We made it through December, which is our October, November, and December, and December was horrible, because they do the social security update, because everybody got a little 2% or 3% or what it takes, 2% this year. So, anybody that we have on social security, when that goes up, it's supposed to hit our system, social security is supposed to link with our system, and it's supposed to automatically update in our system. And there's times that somebody has VA or some other thing that it does not, and we always get an exception report. And I used to get one, and then you'd have to manually go in, calculate it, and manually have to fix it. And we used to get them, and there would be six or seven on there. This year, it was crazy. I had over 50, large counties, El Paso County had like $10,000 on there. And so, they are trying to figure out why these interfaces aren't working there.
Aren't interfacing?
Yeah, because it's causing way too much time. And part of the problem is now with the Obamacare and stuff, we have a lot more people on Medicaid. And so, it's also not only looking at food assistance or financial assistance that we have on, it's looking at all those Medicaid cases that for some reason, it's not updated. And then, yeah, and between us trying to clean up all those colonoscopy changes, and the problem is, we only have until the 18th of the month to do that, because that's when our system calculates the benefits for the next month. And if it's not correct, then for like food assistance, or if it's a financial, it will set up an overpayment. And then, there's claims out there, and so then people have to do all of this. So, we have to make sure that we get that done by that time period. And this year, we didn't even get the conception report, and I don't know, until like the 9th or something, and then we only had a few days to get that report cleared, get all of those updates into the computer, and done. But we did it, we were looking at that, and they sent one out, and I looked at it, and I said, she's a mentalist, it doesn't matter, because it's a small amount. But, yeah, we are complaining about that too, that interface should be working more, we should not be having to clean up that many cases. That's just, it's just crazy.
How's the staff, and are you okay with that at the moment?
We're okay, we're okay right now.
There's a goal, I know you bust to get the streams, but you managing?
Yeah, we're managing, yeah. We made it through that December thing, that was just like, that was crazy, but we got it done.
Good.
Okay, that's all I have.
Do we need a motion, or are we good?
I don't think we need to.
Okay, I have a quick question for you, professional question.
Okay.
This deals with affordable housing.
Okay.
If we were to ask you, how would we define affordable housing, i.e. the price of the house, selling price of the house? Do you have a feel for that, because you deal with a lot of income levels?
We have a gal right now, she's elderly, she gets a social security in the amount of $600 and something a month. Maybe it's, no, maybe, no, I take that back, maybe she's seven. But anyhow, her rent is 600. You know, it's like, she's got to find some type of something, subsidized housing. And Vista Celesta is full. Subsidized housing, which has handled three Canyon City, but we only have so many slots, they're all full. And so, the affordable housing, they do work, and they look, they base it on their incomes. Now, I had a call in to the gal that does that, because I wanted to see if they had a duplex or something that was open, because it's killing her. I mean, you know, by the time she pays her rent, and where she's, and she's living in a Mountain View Apartments, and the rent's like 625, 630 or something like that, and then she has electric heat. And it's like, holy moly, we've done some DOC, where we've paid her bills, and I do some community service block grants, because they're too different, to help with those electric bills for her. But, yeah, so, you know, it's, we have some people who are very, very low income, and so...
Now, when you talk about subsidized housing, you're talking about Section 8 housing.
Sections.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
We sat in on an affordable housing committee meeting yesterday.
Oh, Mike, Mike Lieberman?
Yes.
Yes.
And one of the things we talked about was where we thought a median income level would be for affordable housing. Let's take Section 8 completely out for now, just affordable housing in this county for anyone. Do you have a feel for that? If I came to you personally and said, what do you think that income threshold should be?
I don't know, I don't know. I'd have to look, I mean, we have to kind of figure that out. So, you know, some people are okay, some people struggle paying, you know, they can rent 400 if they're able to do it. Some of them, not so much, it just depends, but I don't know.
In this county, given your experience, if I said, do you think 60,000's a reasonable number for the threshold to qualify for affordable housing? Would you say good, high, low, medium?
I just know a guy that purchased a house for $96,000, and his payment is 600 and something. Maybe, yeah, maybe you can do that, you know, what you're saying, 6,000, yeah.
Because I would think if we were...
I think it's gonna depend, because it's gonna depend on, you know, their loan and that type of stuff, what their, you know, what's their payments gonna be.
So, that's one of the things we need to look at, in this affordable housing thing, is who's gonna be eligible to participate in that?
Uh-huh.
Not. That's, to me, one of the driving forces of that.
Forces, yeah.
And we would be talking about household incomes, not necessarily individual.
No, no, but household incomes, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And I know they, you know, they have programs to, upbringing, to aging, for sweat equity, and they've talked about that, and we don't seem to have anybody that wants to do that. I don't know, I, you know, I'm not sure how that program works either, because that's through area agency on aging, that they're always talking about that. But that's a good question, Tom, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that.
We'll talk about that, and see what we can come up with, you know.
I don't know any other department in county that deals with people and income levels and all that more than your department.
Right, because we're looking at people who are on food assistance, and probably that would be the best basis, because the Medicaid levels are a little bit higher. I would say food levels would give us a better understanding of what that would be.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you, let me, let me, do that, let you know.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks.
Well, good work, thank you, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Bye-bye. And I'm just gonna bring that $10.99 miscellaneous thing to you, okay?
Yeah, let me take it right there.
Really? No, I was just gonna give it to you to deal.
I'll take a look at it.
Oh, okay. But I did, I'll bring that to you, because I just, that was odd.
Thank you, ma'am. If Ms. Brenda indicated that she had an item she'd like us to consider...
Chris Barr just brought this to me while we were discussing something else. This is the original. This is the bail grant for the sheriff's office. I was involved in the initial application for this grant, I can't remember when that was, 2016, probably. And it's basically money that is given to them to provide a statement for one of their employees to, I don't know, if it's even one of their employees, someone, to be a victim's advocate for the sheriff's office. So, basically, he just needs a signature to continue with the grant, to continue to receive the grant.
Who does?
Chris Barr.
Sure, the sheriff's.
Is that B-A-L-E, or yes, I forgot. B-A, it's a...
Victim Assistance Board.
Victim Assistance, yeah, from the 11th Judicial District.
I was familiar with this program, I worked with the last advocate on the current one on several issues. It's a wonderful program, I just wanted to throw that out. So, just from a appropriateness standpoint, is this able to be added to the agenda at this point, voted on, or is this something that needs to be on a future agenda?
Well, I, you know, I've questioned the same thing from time to time. Obviously, we have amendment to the agenda, I have more agenda, and if we can't amend the agenda and act on it, then what are we getting in there for? I think he certainly amended to bring this up as new business, and it's not a controversial thing where he's gonna be able, it doesn't require any expenditure, so...
So, you didn't get it in time to get it when we...
Yeah, he just brought it to me like mid-way.
And I don't mean to cause an issue, I just want to ensure what I do.
Well...
Well, we've had it happen in the past, we couldn't add things to it.
Right, the only other thing I would say about this is, it's, I mean, it's new business, but then it's sort of old business, because we're already receiving the grant. This is just paperwork to continue to receive the grant.
So, I'll go ahead and move based on, based on a recommendation of the sheriff's office that we approve the 11th Judicial District Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement Board contract for 2018. Second.
Moving second to approve the Victim Assistance and Law Enforcement Board contract for the grant 2018. Further discussion, then we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post name, who carries, I will slide this copy.
And you can actually take it over there when you guys go.
Why don't we go with that?
Right.
As soon as we're done here.
They're waiting, so...
And did you want me to call him to let him know?
Uh, no, he thinks they were...
I think, yeah, I asked him when he brought that, and he said they're ready, so...
Yeah, no, I think we're fine. Anything else, gentlemen, before we move into public comment? Is there any comment from the public? Miss, you asked, but we asked you.
I know, I was commenting like crazy, and you didn't hear me.
Oh, yeah, because we don't want, this is only one way.
I know.
Thank goodness. All right, well, thank you, ladies, for being here. Ms. Brenda, I would just ask that, as a reminder, we talked, or we looked at adding on the agenda on our March, whatever those dates are, to invite the director of the clinic over for a discussion about that insurance.
Do you want, do you want that to be coincide with the public health, or?
No, I think that's a different...
Well, we'll see if he accepts.
Okay, anything else? Moving second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post name, who carries. Sorry, I'm trying to remember the last comment.
No, I just said he's never been real thrilled about coming in, and the fact that you're in there.
You know what?
Well, I know they're independent now.
Right, you could say to us, you know, tell us to bounce in, and it doesn't matter.
Okay, one more thing before you all leave. I have...
Leave my stuff here.